All right, we've started recording the zoning board meeting. Bob, if you'd like to call the group to order.
Sure, so we have enough for quorum, so we are starting this meeting at 5:01. And this may be a little bumpy because I haven't done this before. Paul usually does it. But I think the first thing that we need to do is approve the minutes from the last meeting. And I was wondering if there's any corrections and if there are not, if I could get a motion to approve.
You know, I don't recall, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, I was reading it and I don't recall where we asked the owner on Borchers Beach Road to get letters from the neighbor. I thought he already did that. And I thought that the minute said that we asked him to do that. Does that make any difference?
I don't know that the minutes say that, but. I don't see where that says that.
Right, I read that somewhere else, so maybe that was, or maybe that was the town of Westport stuff. Yeah, okay, I'm good.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve last meeting's minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I will second it.
All right, moved in seconded.
Before we vote, I'm so sorry, do you need both alternates to vote on this?
Thanks for asking, Katie. Since we started recording, I'll just mention that we do have a quorum present with one regular member absent, Paul Reisler. And we have the two alternates present tonight. Katie is officially the first alternate, Katie Nelson, and Dave Schultz is the second. Is there anybody who anticipates abstaining on any of the votes tonight? If there's not going to be any abstentions, then one of the alternates is excused.
As long as I'm alternate two, why don't I sign off, Mark?
Okay. Katie, is that okay with you?
Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
All right, Dave, thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Take care.
Thanks.
Okay, sorry about that, so.
That's, I appreciate the clarification. So the motion before you is to approve the minutes as prepared.
And now we ask for a vote, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes, okay. So then the next thing we do, Mark, is read the agenda and amend as necessary. So you or Daphne, you want to read the agenda items?
Sure, well, there's three agenda items that are before you tonight. None of the agenda wouldn't be amended. We would, the first item is a hearing for 6508 Oakwood Place experience from side setback regulation pertaining to a deck. And this is a request that we received to construct a 12 by 18 deck, including a staircase and extending down from its west side. The outer edge of the staircase would be located between three and eight feet from the right side lot line. Staircase portion of the deck represents an increase in the footprint of the deteriorated deck, which this structure would replace. And then our zoning code requires a setback of at least eight feet from a side of rear lot line. And since this notice was published, the applicant has provided just today a revised drawing, which I provided you. And it's in the packet that shows less of an encroachment now into the setback than the original plan. So that's my staff report. It would be appropriate to open the hearing at this point, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so the hearing is open, is there an applicant that would like to address this topic?
I would.
This is Amy Rowan Kim, the owner of the property. I will speak when you tell me to. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay. So this.
Amy, I'm here as well, too.
Oh, Steve, are you there?
Yep, I'm here as well.
Oh, great, you talk.
Okay, so what we had here originally was a four season porch with.
Who is speaking, please, for the record?
I'm sorry, Steve Udelhoven, I'm the owner of SFF Carpentry, general contractor of the project.
Can you get a little closer, can you get a little closer to the computer or phone, whichever it is?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, so I'm Steve Udelhoven, owner of SFF Carpentry, general contractor of the project itself. So what we have looking at here is, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but there was another contractor prior to me that removed an existing deck.
Correct.
And then after removing it, come to find out that to reconstruct it would be in violation of the current setbacks for the city of Middleton. And so then what we're proposing to do is not increase the footprint of the deck, but it's the same layout and take the staircase off backside and bringing it back towards the four season porch that is existing right now.
So what is that dimension to the top lot line? 3.0? Five feet.
That's five.
Okay.
So is there anybody that is here to in support or against this proposal, who also needs to speak?
In other words, does anybody else wish to speak to this matter from the public? This is your chance in the.
Thank you, Mark. Well, the, this is Amy, the owner of the home. The deck was removed really without, I wouldn't say without my permission, but we certainly didn't know that this was going to happen and have a plan B. And there is a door right there in which is currently completely blocked off. But that door comes off of a three season room and it really detracts from the house. It tracks from property value, everything, if we can't put that deck back up there so that they can at least get out of the door that already exists. And I guess that's it. I don't know what else, you can, you can see what that it's, it's not fabulous if we can't put a deck back there.
And the side yard requirement is eight feet, so your deck is encroaching at that one corner, three feet into the setback.
Correct.
That's the variance request.
That is it, yes.
And there's nobody else on the call that wishes to speak to this topic? So Mark, is this where we would close the public hearing part and open up the board discussion of the topic?
That would be appropriate, yep.
Okay, that's what we're going to do then. So public portion is closed and now the board can speak to the topic. Anybody have any thoughts, ideas?
I have a question for the owner.
Yes.
The deck that was torn down, was that the 12 by 14 that filled that square?
Yes. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
So you're not really adding on to it, you're.
No, we are not.
Replacing it.
Yes. Strictly replacing.
Okay. Have you been in contact with the neighbor to that side, a common neighbor?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought I saw something there, okay. Mark, the only reason, Mark Opitz, the only reason this is up for for variances because it's over three feet off grade, correct?
Actually, the grade has nothing to do with it. We, a deck or patio can't be closer than eight feet regardless of how high off the grade it is. What you're thinking of, Mark?
Is that in Middleton?
Yeah.
That's in Middleton under our current zoning ordinance, but I can tell you that our zoning ordinance is getting overhauled this summer. For the next year, we're going to be working on it, so we'll be revisiting all these things.
If it's in Madison, I know if it's less than, I believe it's less than three or 24 inches off ground, you can pretty much encroach right up to a lot line. So I was just confused on that one.
Yeah, that's what I may have been thinking of also, yeah.
So in the, in the previous deck before it was turned down, tear down, was the, hey Steve, was the stair shifted north so that it aligned with the deck? Is that? That's how.
Well, it actually, the deck, the deck was slightly larger before and it kind of did a rounded thing at the end. And then the steps were in the same place.
So the.
So the steps are in the same location as they're shown here?
Correct.
Okay.
But again, you just, you just want to replace the deck that existed before the guy took it down, right?
Correct. Yep, that's all I want to do, that's it.
Yeah, personally, I don't have any issue with this. It's, it's not encroaching any further than it was before. And if anything, it's, it's less encroaching than it was before to the.
I agree.
To the side. And I think this is a unique, a uniquely shaped lot as it, as it becomes quite narrow towards the back.
So if we were to be looking for a description of a hardship, the shape of the lot and the tightness of the site and the fact that it was or we're replacing what was there before, is that?
I think that's, yeah, and even further that they're, they're lessening the encroachment than what was there previous.
You know, I just want to bring up the fact that we are once again looking at a site plan that was not professionally drawn. It says approximate measurements taken from DCI map. So we don't really know how far the corner of the existing house is from the property line. But it's something that you know, in this case, I don't think is going to be that big of a factor. But yet, do you guys agree with me?
No, yeah.
That we really need, yeah, we need to, go ahead.
I was going to ask you, Mark, where are you getting the idea that this lot line was generated from DCI map?
It's what the note says at the bottom of the page.
Oh, it does, okay, I guess I don't see it on my screen.
Site is approximate, measurement's taken from DCI map. Obviously, it's obviously approximate because the house is actually over the.
Over the line.
Over the lot line on the.
South side, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So we're trusting, we're trusting all the.
Mark Opitz, is there, is there anything in your requirements for applicants that, that ask for a certified map?
No, that is something else I'd like to put in our zoning ordinance. We rely, the applicants are always responsible for providing, for, for building according to what the zoning standards are, or in this case, what the variance is granted. That is their responsibility and how they achieve that is their responsibility. I, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
So so in this case, if, if, if the variance was granted to be within five feet of the side lot, but in reality, that's two feet and this, this plan is wrong, then they would not be. I mean, I'm just wondering if, if we do move forward with this, if it makes sense or in the language to, to be in line with the west and north north side of the building so that it's, in this case, it's, it's kind of easy because it's more to do with the building than the lot line. It's squaring off the building. But in, in other cases, I can, that, that wouldn't be the case.
Maybe in our approval, we should have verbiage saying that the setback should be verified.
The lot line found.
Right.
Yeah. So in light of that, that makes a lot of sense, I think. Can somebody provide a motion?
Can I point out?
How would that be verified or who to or that, that's my only question.
Are we having to get a survey now?
Yeah, surveyor would have to just survey that one lot line.
Correct.
Well, who prepared the site plan? Could it be that there, that the house actually encroaches over the lot?
Steve, I'll let you take this one.
Uh, no, Mark had somebody from a co-op draft, draft all this stuff up.
Correct, I agree with you. And it, yeah. So I don't think the house is over the lot line and we are not going to build the deck any larger than it was. It will be less of an encroachment than it was.
Still, just to cover you, to cover you as the owner, if we as a variance, as the board says you can go ahead and build to the, to the five foot line and you end up building to four feet away, that's, that's your mistake and basically you'd have to tear it down or else you know, angle it off, cut it off or something. So we're just trying to protect you is what we're trying to do.
No, oh, I appreciate that.
The question I still have is if we're building an, if we're making it smaller and we're adding, we're basically replacing what was there but smaller. I guess why is that a complication for anybody? It wasn't an issue for 20 some odd years.
Right, because, because there are zoning requirements, whether it was there or not.
It was there at one point.
There is no such thing as grandfathering. Steve.
Well, not necessarily, I, I guess if I use the term grandfather incorrectly, but so it wouldn't be an issue if I, if I would have repaired it. So if I would have left like the existing frame, I'm just saying, for example, I did not do this, went through, replaced the floor joist, or replaced the floor joists for true two by tens, upgraded it to Rex, new railing, all that other. My computer keeps shutting down. We wouldn't be having this issue, but we're having this issue unfortunately because somebody tore it down.
Correct. Unfortunately, yes.
You know, that's just kind of where I think, you know, in Amy's situation, it's really hard to look at this and it's probably really troubling for her because, you know, she wasn't aware of the situation and some other guy came in and just was like, oh, I'll tear this down, no biggie. And now look where we're at. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's, you know, that in my mind, it's a I, I think bringing back to Mark's point, like, we're just trying to make sure, so once we grant this variance, it's, it, the variance is there for the perpetuity of the, the life of this lot, right? So we're just trying to protect you to make sure that the variance covers what you're trying to achieve. Because the, I believe the variance, how it's written, is that the encroachment to only five feet instead of eight feet from the sideline. But if we, if we say that and that five feet isn't, isn't correct, because this, because this plan wasn't done by a surveyed, or sorry, did I speak wrong?
Daphne, can you go to the hearing notice, please? There's something in Amy's, the applicant's favor in this case because of how I wrote the hearing notice. And I'm comfortable, I, I appreciate the concern that board members are raising and that is again, something we need to address in our zoning code. I've got a long list of things that our consultants is going to be addressing. But this was written, so it would be located between three and eight feet from the right side lot line. And that was when, at one point, the stairs were going to be sticking further. I think what I would recommend you do, and I would be comfortable in this case, given the, you know, the, the difficult, frankly, the pain that Amy has gone through. I would, you know, as long as the understanding is she's going to build what's on her site plan, she's got two feet of wiggle room. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Yep. And, and that's not usually how variance notices are written. In this case, I, I, because of the angle of the deck as it relates to the lot line, it wasn't parallel. So I gave this, I think there's some extra protection here, there's some extra buffer. But your points are very well taken in terms of reminding applicants that they are responsible and that you want to make sure that they are building according to, or, you know, where the lot line is and, and just for their own protection and the future buyers. So that is a very good point.
I, I am comfortable with all you just said. That would, that, I, I know that we can, the three to eight feet, I know we can meet that.
So my question from a contractor standpoint, just for future references, if I were to come across this again, which I hope I, I mean, I, this is the first time I've ever had to go through this, that a survey be conducted prior to this meeting?
Or, or finding the lot lines, the stakes with a metal detector and putting it between them, that's the cheapest way to do it.
Just get a metal detector, okay.
Yeah, and then, and, and, you know, that way measuring from that. I talked to you, I can talk to you about it outside this meeting, the hearing is closed and we, you know, we have other items, but I can talk. And then the other thing I was going to point out, as you're looking at hardships, the other thing that I heard, in case anybody has, has forgotten, is there was, the existing door is a means of egress.
Yep.
The deck. So you may want to factor that into your decision.
So Mark Opitz, is it okay if the, if we say three to five? Let me see how I want to put this. They've revised the plan, so the staircase moved. That was very good. Does that reflect the correct variance then? The wording? I mean, if we say three to five, they could now build their deck even bigger than it's shown.
But that's why I'm saying to, to approve the deck plan, to grant the variance as indicated in the notice and to build the deck as shown on the site plan.
As, as.
In alignment with.
As the amended plan, as per the amended plan? The revised plan, basically?
Yeah, that's my understanding of it.
I guess somewhere in there, we should just say something about the revised plan. I mean, I'm okay with this, like I said, I just want to protect the owners.
Right. So follow that, can somebody make a motion?
Sure, I'd make, I'd make, oh, go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the, the variance with the amended map. Not extending into the setback any more than three foot as shown on that amended plan and and some of the hardships include the odd shaped lot, the fact that this deck was, was already there and they're making it smaller and less encroaching and that this deck provides a means of egress out of the second story door.
Think you got it all there, Justin, I'll second that.
Awesome, woo.
Uniquely shaped lot, replacing the deck with a slightly smaller structure, providing a means of egress from the house.
Additional means of egress, yeah. In addition to means, it's not like it's the only one.
How about preserves a means of egress?
There you go.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And did you want to say anything about squaring, that it's built in, it's in alignment with the, with the existing facade or that, you know, it's squaring off the building? Or did you not want to say that?
Well, it just has to reflect, it has to reflect the revised plan.
Okay.
Okay, moved in seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay.
And that was Mark who seconded?
Yes.
Right.
Amy, you can breathe now.
Thank you, I'm going to have a glass of wine.
Go for it.
All right, that was so hard for you.
Thank you very, very much, I really appreciate it. So, so I just click out and we're good?
You're good, we can issue, if there's any permits, well, actually, I might help you with that, Daphne's, well, maybe Daphne can follow up tomorrow and issue the permit.
So that would be great, I will have, I, I will have someone swing by and pick it up because I've already paid the fee, is that okay?
I'm, Daphne, go ahead.
Uh, we'll, we'll email it to you. We have a whole online permitting system now, so it'll be emailed directly to you, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, okay, thank you. I'll figure out how I'm, I'm leaving, okay, there we go, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for agenda item number two. Mark, do you want to introduce this item?
Sure, I just, before I do that, I want to know if the, if Mr. Levy is present. I don't think he is, he's agenda item three, so I'm going to email him in the meantime.
Okay.
Agenda item two is 7010 Maywood Avenue, variance from rear setback, setback regulation pertaining to a dwelling unit. The owner's, John Mittmon, is requesting his zoning variance for the purpose of constructing a seven by 12 foot addition above an exposed basement. The first floor addition would be located 28 feet, including a 12 inch overhang from the rear lot line. And our code requires a setback of at least 30 feet from the rear lot line. I'll let the applicant speak to the reason, but this is a pretty straightforward one, so if you wish to open the hearing.
Sure. It would be appropriate. Yeah, we've, we wanted to put on a first floor bathroom laundry over the existing shop in the basement. And fill that space, we're not planning to expand the drip line at all, closer in any, any direction. We'd be just expanding the basement section straight up and have the same drip line that we have now.
Pretty straightforward.
Daphne, you want to show the rest of the plans? Okay, there's what we're covering.
So you do have a little bit of overhang over that, like a foot or something, it's hard to tell.
There's, there's an 18 inch overhang.
18 inch, okay.
And we're going to extend that out. I got the Ken Lever drawing from Brunzel and I got it engineering stamped approved on the way it's being constructed.
All right, Daphne, could you go back to the site plan again, please? So this is tucked in on the inside corner then?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
So there's parts of the house that are much closer to the lot line than this.
Yes.
In every direction, yeah.
Wow, this, this might be a short one here.
Yeah.
You know, we got the smallest lot on the block by many feet. If I had another foot in the middle of the lot, this wouldn't be an issue.
A lot.
And we're crooked on the lot. I, I found the lot, for the help of the neighbor, and I strung strings between them and we measured and it was like, oh man, we're just a little bit too close.
Did you have to have a, a variance for the original?
This was built before zoning laws.
Got it.
It was built in the 60s, the original house was built in 1948.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So that explains why the family room is only 20 feet from the lot line.
Right.
Yeah, well.
It is what it is.
It is.
Yes, so just go right on top of that.
Do we want to ask if there's any input from the neighbors before we make a motion?
We received one statement of, from Tammy and Ryan Shaw, 7022 Maywood Avenue. And they are conveying their complete support for the project. And I sent the email to you right before the start of the meeting.
Right, got it.
Why don't you go up three stories? Just get him. He could put in an elevator.
Okay, I guess we should probably close the public hearing portion and have any discussion that this group of board members needs to have. But this seems pretty straightforward, so. Any comments, then, make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to echo your, your comments. I think this might be the most straightforward one that we've ever, that I've ever seen since being on here, so I think it's.
Yeah, I see no problem.
I see no problem.
There certainly is enough hardship here.
Well, one question I have is that window. Well, one question I have is that window, the window in the back there, the double hung?
Uh huh.
I hope, I hope that's not an egress window from a from a bedroom. Which would then be covered up.
No.
No.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion then, if there's no more discussion to grant this variance.
I second it.
Do we, and and the hardships being, sorry, did you have some marks that you wanted to?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's
The hardships are outlined in their letter.
Yeah, there you go. Age in place type thing.
Yep, absolutely. This is a no brainer.
In place without any change in the footprint. What else is in there?
I would add the small lot compared to Mayberry lots.
And less of an encroachment than an existing, the existing addition or?
By by a large amount.
Existing part of the house, yeah.
And that it's not expanding the footprint whatsoever, it's, you know, it's just going on top of something that's already there.
So I made the motion, did we have a second?
Uh, John.
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, Mark, you've got it all down, so all in favor, voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Have a good night.
Who who are the other people present, did they speak, K L O D Y, is that just a neighbor?
They were our neighbors, yes.
They're right next door, he's the one that helped me find the metal stakes, he knew where they were.
Okay, but you didn't, okay, so there was no comment from, okay, that's fine. I, we're all good.
I don't know.
We're happy with it, we have no objection.
Yeah, that was George's voice.
We didn't capture that. So we're good, we're good.
Great, thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
All right, your last one, for some reason, the applicant, I don't think is here, I emailed him. This was, this was deferred at the last meeting, you'll recall. It's unusual for an applicant not to be here, but if you feel you have enough information, I'm just double checking to make sure I told them the right date. Let me just double check that.
Is Tom here from the?
No, Tom's on vacation this week. Yeah, so I wrote to Steve on Monday and said the agenda and packet are now posted, he had given me, let's see, when did he last write? Let me just double check this here, just want to make sure we the right communications. So he wrote to me on the nineteenth. He's attached three documents, those are in your packet, please let me know if you have any other needs. Yeah, so I let him know, I I don't know, I I must have let him know we were meeting on this day, but I I don't see that at the moment. I I mean, I let him know on Monday that, I don't know if I gave him earlier notice, I think we did, but anyway.
Is it required that he be present?
No, it's just unusual for an applicant not to be, but I and I frankly, in his defense, I think the last time we met was on a Thursday, not on a, well, when did we meet last?
It was a
That was a Thursday, I mean, I I've no idea why he's not present, so. Let me just see if you can get on the phone.
Recall from the last meeting, there wasn't full support of the idea of this variance, we were trying to get him to look at putting his house in a place where it didn't need a variance.
Correct.
And I don't His, his, the sketch that he had wasn't correct, so we essentially told him to go back and look at it, whether or not the house could be, what he wanted to do could be recited.
It looked like his house could really be exactly where he wanted to, with maybe moving the garage back, but using the twenty foot setback instead of the whatever it was, the highway. Or maybe it wasn't twenty, maybe it was less, I'm forgetting the setbacks from last time, but.
So if I recall, looking at this proposed location for the house, his primary concern was the three big trees that are the red circles. And I think to what you were saying, Justin, you could just translate this house back so the Borchers, Borchers Road side was not encroaching across the setback line and it would fit.
Yeah, actually, two, he had two concerns, one was the mature pines, which I don't think is a problem, his biggest thing is he wants to center this between Borchers Beach Road and Simon Trail. And basically, yeah, because this, the way the roads are, yeah, you got to kind of show this, the way the roads are, Borchers Beach Road is much further away from the setback than the Simon Trail, because it's supposed to be a bigger right of way.
Right.
So, you know, he's just trying to center it more on the, what's there as buildable. But, you know, my, I think my concern is, what's the difference if you're a little closer to one road than another, you know, we still have responsibility to to stay within the setbacks if it's possible. Now, he did send, Mark, he did send all kinds of different photographs and stuff here, some are very confusing.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what his final.
Yep. My my recollection of the conversation we had at the last meeting was that the diagram that he prepared wasn't accurate, and we felt, okay, that if he actually had an accurate diagram, he could reposition the prop, the house, and wouldn't need a variance, just go ahead and do it. And we said that if he did, if he couldn't do that and needed a variance, then to come back and we would approve it. Now, whether or not he did any of that, I don't know.
Well, he says he straightened the, pulled the garage back and put it in line, you know, Daphne, go back to that last one you had.
Yeah.
I've got a, I want to point something out that he thinks is a problem, but I don't think is, the, actually, the aerial photo.
Okay.
With with the white arrows. Yeah, his big thing here on number three is if you push the house back, because he thinks there's a setback to the left there, that you'd, he's crossing out two trees that he'd have to cut down. But but I don't think he's restricted. He could be moving that house further to the, I don't know if this is set up north, south, but if I would call it the northwest, yeah, he could, he could push that a little closer, and now if you go to the actual site plan, where we have the setbacks. Yeah, you see, he's
He's got plenty of room right there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing where I'm still not seeing where he's thinking he has such a problem here, other than the fact that he just wants to center it between the two roads. So he's asking, he's continuing to ask for the eight, eight point six foot variance.
Right.
Now, this is what was a little, a little confusing, is is this a revised site plan that he that he's brought in here? Is that garage moved to the way we asked him, or we suggested?
I think
Yeah, because it was, it was forward before, it was proud of it. The garage stuck out proud of the rest of the home before.
So if he pulled the garage back, if the garage was out forward to that, and that was eight foot six, then the house would have been further than eight foot six setback. So now it looks like he kept the face of the garage in the same eight foot six setback and slid the house forward towards Borchers Beach Road.
Anyway, look at this plan, he's got room to move the whole house and garage and not need a variance.
Not only that, but I have a hard time with new construction. I mean, you bought the lot, it can be whatever you want it to be. You know what I mean, you you can adjust plans.
Right.
To fit what you, what's there, like, I just have a hard time with new construction. Asking for variances, yeah.
So Mark Opitz, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I just was questioning his, you guys keep saying that he wanted this new house centered on the lot. Um.
Centered between the roads.
Between the roads.
Yeah, the lot was shown on the drawing we were just looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, so Katie, the the lot line actually ends like right around here, so there's like another like twenty feet of just like lawn before you get to the actual road, but his his lot line ends like right around here where my mouse is.
So the right of way to Borchers Beach Road is much wider than the right of way on Simon Trail.
Got it, got it.
So they'll never, they'll never, they'll never widen Borchers Beach Road, but that just makes him think that he's got more more land to center it on, so he's trying to slide it towards Borchers Beach Road to center it more.
Oh, I see what you mean, mm hmm.
And I definitely agree, Justin, that a new construction, you have the ability to move it anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Within the setbacks.
Yeah, I agree.
I assume these circled houses and number two are people that have signed his form letter.
Yeah, I think it says that.
It says that at the top, yep.
Oh, yeah. I like the fact that he signed one with himself and his wife signing it, because they own this property to the, to the side, and they said, yeah, we agree with them.
Two different names.
Yeah. I was looking at it to see, is this a neighbor, a brother or something, and I said, no, it's, it's them. Okay, let's, what else do they have here, Daphne, what else did they send in for?
So is this, they sent in a lot of plans, and so is this top one that you were shown before, is that what they're actually proposing?
So
A little confused, because there's a lot of
Sorry if it was confusing, I put all the new stuff at the top. So this is, let's see, you're on page twenty seven, yeah, so I basically just attached everything from last time and then had the new, so you had context, maybe I should have made that clearer, sorry. So this on top, but let's go through the packet quickly.
Yeah.
I think it's just three pa So he has, it should start with this statement. Yeah, okay, there's the revised statement, then you go down, here's the new plot plan, because last time we had, you know, a bad plan. And then then this is new. And that's new. And now that's the previous, now this is the start of the old packet.
Okay. Forget about the old pack, yeah, there is the old pack, see?
Right, but I just had it there for reference, so you could see the change, and I thought it was obvious, I guess it wasn't obvious, sorry.
Well, Daphne, go back to that old packet, the site plan that has, yeah, so let's see what he did differently here.
So there, it looks like it fits within the twenty feet.
Yeah, but see, that's, he's just showing there that he'd have to cut down trees.
Know what the tree is, okay, okay, I see.
But can you, can you go further in the old pack and show what he had proposed? And what he, so we can relate that to his changes that he made?
Yeah.
Keep going. Okay, existing house, there you go, there's what he had originally thought of.
So that's, you know, two more, I think.
But Katie, you see the different setbacks to the different roads there, though?
What's misleading, Katie?
I do, I do, yeah.
Ignore, the roads are in yellow, they're not where the labels are.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So in, in this case, right, home with variance, we said that he may not need it, because this is showing this, this doesn't have the twenty foot setback on it. I think this is the one we were looking at, yeah, when we, when we talked about that last time, if this is what he's hoping to do.
Well, on the top there, he's only got a
So what changed between this and then the the new one? So it's eighty-two feet.
Can we put this one and the new one side by side?
You see what, you see what changed, what changed is he slid the house down to match the front of the garage instead of the garage back.
So the files are there individually, if you want to have one be the PDF here and then the new, the new site lines, files.
Stay on this one for a second, because here you're looking at the lot lines, not the roads, which are within a right of way, which I looked on DCI maps and the Borchers Road is pushed all the way to the other side of the right of way, which makes it very strange looking in that regard, but if the setbacks are from the property lines, this is a pretty clear diagram that he could translate the house, what is it? Eleven and a half feet, and he's not going to have any problem fitting that house and garage on the lot within the stated setbacks.
Exactly, and the thing that he didn't like is that it then be a little closer to Simon Trail.
Yeah.
Then to Borchers Beach Road, and he wants to put it exactly centered.
Is that a hardship?
I don't see it as a hardship.
I don't either.
I don't either.
New construction.
All right, let me reshare with them side by side. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Yeah, so what he does, he slid the house towards Borchers Beach.
Right, you're right, that's what he did.
We wanted him to do the opposite.
Right, we wanted him, wanted him to move the garage.
Yes, okay.
I think it's really important that he understand that the lot lines of his property are what is important. And that the setbacks are from the lot line and not from the paved service surf that's in the right of way.
Exactly. I think he understands that, but he's still, he still just wants his way.
Yeah.
Well, I ju, I think he just changed from the last, you know, he said this one was fine last time, right, the one on the left. And then he shifted it further southeast, like it like the one on the left would be okay, because it actually would fall within the twenty feet.
No, the one on the left?
If you, if you, yeah, if you, if you did, if they did the twenty foot setback on that, I bet that house fits. Maybe the garage has to slide back, but it's like you said, instead of shifting the garage back, you move the whole house forward, and that's what the issue is, but it's completely different than what he was showing last, last time.
Yeah.
So Mark, I have a quick question for you, as we're looking at this diagram, because the other one shows the setbacks as being twenty feet, and this diagram looks like it's saying that it's thirty-five feet, so I don't know why there'd be the inconsistency.
Remember that the originally supplied setbacks were incorrect.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at here.
Yeah, so when you see in the upper left there, it says thirty-five foot minimum and thirty foot minimum, they thought they had a different zoning designation, which I discovered didn't apply, that's why I ended up introducing the twenty foot setback.
Okay.
In red, in red, so they, then the new drawing on the right shows the correct setback lines.
Okay.
But I agree, the house got shifted forward.
Yeah.
So going back to the other diagram where you have the correct twenty foot setbacks, he's definitely got room to build the house he wants on the piece of land that he bought.
In the location, he showed it at the last meeting. It's just that he changed it.
Let's just, I'll look at his statement again, I'm, I'm really surprised that he did this.
It's too bad he's not here to explain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I called him in and sent an email.
If you go back to his If you go back to his updated statement, Mark, I think there was some bold text at the bottom that he basically said, I don't care what you told me the last time. I came to my own conclusion that what I want to do is right for me.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. He still wants a variance for whatever reason.
The resulting placement continues to be cockeyed, off-center on the lot. Not on the lot, but on the, between the roads is what he means. With the home's rear backyard being very close to, to this, very close is of course debatable, to the Simon Trail asphalt end. And the front being significantly far away from the Borders Beach asphalt end. Well, we all understand that.
Yeah.
And he also doesn't want it to look like it's kindergarten, or staked it out.
Yeah.
Or it was dropped from the sky.
Yeah.
Both of those are hardships.
Yeah, hardship is I had a kindergartner draw this site plan.
Yeah, I mean, he.
Keep in mind, this is recorded and.
Right, right. What, what I'm seeing is that he's thinking of the road, as you explained earlier, he is the setback fifty-one feet from the paved road. That's not the issue.
I'm, I'm a little concerned, I'd like to ask him why the third point, to more properly center the home with the required setbacks, it would need to be pushed north on the property. I disagree with that. Despite the slimming of the home, two of the premature pines would still need to be removed. Does anyone see that?
No, I, I agree.
I mean, you could move it south on the property. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying, you've got room to do that.
Yeah.
Given all of this, I move that we deny the variance.
Second.
Could we deny it, or should we postpone it, tell us some point when he can come back again, Mark? And is there any point to doing that? What does the board think, I mean, I, I'm all for.
Well, we don't, we don't really know why he didn't, why he's not showing up today. Maybe it was miscommunication, so maybe what we ought to do is just have him come back again. Not deny the variance, but just have him come back, and then we'll look at it again and then make a decision at that point.
Well, let's put it this way, if he came back and made his arguments that he made in writing, it wouldn't change my mind.
It wouldn't change my mind either.
He better come up with something different. Or, or else he should stay within the setbacks. As far as I'm concerned.
So we can either vote on the motion, or someone can make an alternate, an alternate motion.
A substitute motion to defer.
Substitute motion to defer.
Who was the second, who was the second on the motion to deny the variance?
That was me, Mark.
Okay.
Mark, if we deny this, does he have another venue or another option?
Yeah, he could appeal it.
Yeah, he would appeal it to, would he appeal it to us?
No, it would appeal to court. I, I, I mean, I, you know, I think given that we don't know what the status of, of where he is, and what happened, you know, I would recommend I would recommend a deferral, you know, that would be my advice to you as, as staff. Because otherwise, the court system is the recourse.
Yep.
And if there's some information that he could have provided and wasn't here, you know, I think he was properly noticed, but I, you know, we've had, I will say this, we've had phone trouble the last two days, we've had phones switched out. Not all messages have been delivered, we were advised this morning, so given that, I would prefer that you defer it.
I can rescind my original motion.
Yes, Katie can withdraw her motion.
Thank you.
I second Mark's motion.
Mark can't make a motion.
I'm looking for a motion to defer this matter.
I'll make the motion to defer.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, and so this will be deferred. And that was the last item, so is there anything else, Mark, or can we adjourn our meeting?
You can adjourn.
So it's five fifty-six, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.